...of the United States of America. In a truly positive way, which stands one nation and under God invisible with the routine justice for all.
I need a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Any additions or corrections? All in favor? I agree. Question carried. Okay, open forum. This time, we would like to give district residents an opportunity to ask any questions about this agenda or about operations within the school district. Personal matters cannot be addressed in public session, and comments may be recorded and responded to by the Board of Education or superintendent at a later date. So we ask that you keep your comments five minutes with us. So, do you have any five minutes or less comments? Okay. Question of the board, any changes to the agenda that you'd like to make?
I would just, out of pull-out E, I just have a question about that.
E in the consent agenda?
In the consent agenda, yes.
That's neat.
This is not premature to say that.
Yep. Okay, got it. Any other changes? And we can move on to presentations, and I believe you, the campus, you have some good stuff to tell us?
Yes, I do.
Stand.
All right, so just, hey, do you want to pass? I don't have anything multimedia, I apologize, it's not very STEM of me. So you're gonna get a little packet here, but I'll just kind of start by just telling you about Camp Invention, if you don't know what it is. It is a camp that is run for one week, and it's run in 48 states and Washington DC. There's a ton of schools that sponsor them, they're sponsored by colleges, they're sponsored by public schools, they're sponsored all over the place, and they are STEM-focused. There's four different modules that the kids work through, and they, well, there's just descriptions for this year's program in here, every year there are different, there's a different curriculum. This year, there's one that's about maiden birdhouses, there's one where there's an invention, there's one with coding, and it's all hands-on, it's not sitting down and listening to somebody talk and writing notes, it's all moving and doing. So this came about, this was in the summer, at our end-of-summer STEM meeting, about talking about it, and I did some legwork and looking into it. Somebody I know in the north country runs one at the SUNY Canton Campus, and it's very successful up there, and I knew we had done it before, and it had just kind of fallen away because of various capital projects, and I have a vested interest because my son will be able to do it this coming summer, so I thought, better time to do it than right now! So they have been great, the Camp Invention people are really very helpful, I send them an email, and they are responding within the hour, sometimes within the 10 minutes. So anything I've had questions about, they've been able to get back to me right away. And when I saw Mr. McGuire last week at the rehearsal, and he kind of said, "Yeah, let's do it," with the flyer, I sent them the stuff, and they were like, "Okay, great, you will have those by Tuesday." Because I said, "We need these by Tuesday." And they said, "Okay, you will have them by Tuesday." So the front page of the packet is just the nuts and bolts, the dates are August 1st through 1st to the 5th, the rep at Camp Invention said that the most popular weeks across the board are either the 1st or 2nd week of August, so let's go with what we recommend. It is for children entering first through sixth grade. The staffing needs will be based on our enrollment, so as we take in more registrants, then we'll know how many people we need. We do need a minimum of 35 kids in order to even have the camp, I don't think that would be a problem, just based on what I'm talking to Dorothy Shaline, who used to run it, and Bill the guy who used to teach at it, he was like, "Yeah, no problem, you will have plenty of kids." And then the requirements for teachers go up as, because they maintain a 1 to 8, or 1 to 8, a ratio. So if we have up to nine, once we hit 90 kids, we get the fifth module, which is not described here in the little sheet about the EPIC program, but the fifth module is like games and movement and that kind of thing. So the kids would be either outside if it was nice, or in the common space if it wasn't. So there are the four modules for sure, though, and all the kids move through all four modules based on their grade, on their age level, so they split them out according to age. If there was only the two teachers, if we only had 35 kids and there were only two teachers, then each teacher would teach two modules, so the kids would just rotate that way. And there's one module per classroom, rather than trying to share, because there's crazy amount of materials, equipment, and stuff that comes along with this. There is base camp in the morning, so that's when everybody kind of meets together, and they do a little get-to-know-you game, and just to kind of get the kids started, and then they move through the day. And they do have to bring their own lunch, unless we for some reason decided to do a lunch program, but that plan is, I think, at the moment, to have them bring their own lunch. I did put, there is an opportunity for high school students to serve as interns, if that was something we wanted to look into further down the road, or for this summer, I guess we could, we could talk about that.
Yes, please.
Okay. And that's down here also, under future opportunities. I'll get there in a second. So the logistics, the teacher training can happen as early as January, once we start to see registration, we put it out to staff who wants to be a part of it, who's available, because the manuals are available in January, the backgrounds and overviews, the curriculum videos are available by mid-April, and then it's kind of on them to make sure that they are familiar enough with the modules that they're going to be teaching, so that they can facilitate them and answer questions and be ready to go. Room prep, we will need, and we've, there were some emails flying about rooms, and we will need five rooms in addition to the multipurpose room, but I think that was decided that that wasn't going to be a problem. One additional piece, though, is that we will need to have access to those rooms one week before camp starts in order to set up and have a space for all the materials, which is five to seven boxes per module. So it's a little material-heavy, but they send it all to us, we don't have to provide anything. That's one great thing, I think, about this whole program, we don't, all we have to do is provide a space, teachers and kids. They give us everything else, which is amazing. They are so super helpful, it is unbelievable, like, when I said, "Yes, we have a go, let's do it," I got three emails within five minutes, one from the girl that I've been talking to, another from the person who like facilitates the directors, and another from the person who does all the flyers and all the program promotion and everything, I was like, "Oh my gosh, you guys are really on us." So then these future opportunities, and these are things that are in addition to, that Camp Invention, their parent company runs, and one of them is this club invention, which is an after-school program, which is done during the year for first through sixth graders. Invention Project, which they just started this last summer, which is for sixth through eighth graders, it's sort of like a camp invention, but just a different name, and they do slightly different things, it's a little more, well, it's older, it's just a little bit different. Counselors in Training for seventh through ninth graders, it did say they're usually former Camp Invention participants, so at this point, that would be difficult for us, unless they participated somewhere else, but they work as CITs with the Camp Invention kids. And they are mentored by a leadership intern, which is the opportunity for the high school students, the 10th through 12th graders, and they would help, they would mentor the CITs and then also help facilitate the activities during camp. So that is the basics. On the back is just some information that they sent to me, kind of, some of it is repeat, the price is $225 per child, but there are opportunities for discounts for employee children. They also did mention, one of her emails mentioned that they have worked with schools using Title I money for possible discounts, and I didn't know, we could maybe talk about that and see if I could get more information from her about how that would be possible. And then this is the, the next page was just a little breakdown on the four different modules, and then the last page was how it aligns with the 21st century skills. So, and this done content. Questions? Should have flyers for K through 5 students tomorrow, that's what they said, just like that, yes. I'm hoping to get them into the hands of all the elementary teachers by the end of the day tomorrow, that's my hope, because if I don't get them to their hands by tomorrow, I don't think they're going to go home.
It might be a good idea to wait till the week we get back, because if they go home right now, they might get lost in all of the craziness that's at home.
We were hoping to get them out before break, in case people wanted to order them as Christmas gifts, like register their kids as a Christmas gift or grandparents.
Maybe we should just kind of doing it again.
Okay. Okay.
Because I think a lot of them are gonna not be low down.
Okay.
So it's either Merry Christmas or Happy Birthday.
Right. Just because I know, and that was one of the reasons that I talked to Mr. McGuire about trying to get this done before break, like, I know that we've already established our summer plans, and I know that a lot of families will do that over this upcoming couple of months, and if they know when this week is, then they can maybe work around it if they were thinking of doing it, but, so.
Is it going to be open to just T-Bird students?
Anybody.
Are you going to advertise any of them?
I asked the reps about that, they said, "Let's start with just T-Bird and then branch out if we thought we needed to." Word of mouth, they said, tends to be pretty effective. Lansing does a week of Camp Invention, but I don't know what week, they're the only other vocal school that does it. I do think these future opportunities, like the Invention Project and the Counselors in Training, are things that we should, yeah, keep in the back of our minds, just because I think that once kids do this, and they kind of graduate out of it, they're gonna be like, "Oh, I don't want to keep doing this." And those are opportunities for them to get into it in a different way.
Is it paid to us and then we?
No, it's all done online, or they, the flyer that they're gonna get home has a website to go to, to register. Everything is done through them.
That's something we need to keep track of.
No, we, we're, we don't have to do anything, other than run the camp, it's really lovely.
Can you have enough people that are interested in?
I think we will, I haven't, I had to put it out there because I didn't know, I didn't want to be too, yes, right, so I didn't, I put up, but I have various people who I've seen, have, I've said, "Hey, are you available this week in August?" And people are.
I think we'll have more people than you have spots.
Right, I think that's very possible, so.
So then the staffing gets paid through Camp Invention?
Yep. Very nice.
It is nice.
I know! When the second round of flyers goes out after the holidays, if there was any information about scholarships available, or whatever the discount information could go with it. Yep, absolutely.
And we can look into title money if you want, I don't know more about that, I'd be, contact to look into writing into the title grants.
Okay.
Is that thing likely?
I don't know.
I can find out more about it.
I mean, our title grants are written for this year, but for next summer going forward, yes, we'll look into it.
Okay.
We'll look, we'll see what we can do.
All right, any other questions? Sounds really exciting, right?
I think it should be pretty good.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Getting charged.
Sure. Okay, looking onto cost budgets, do we have any? It's quite time. Next committee reports, and the policy committee, I directed toward the first reading, we're requesting for the student grading information systems. This is a new policy, we have double-checked with the principals, building principals, and you all agree that this is in line with what you would normally be doing anyway, right? We're not asking you to jump to any more.
Pretty spot on with what we already do.
Yeah, and whatever we're not doing, we're capable of implementing, there's nothing, technically, we can't do in the policy. Michael, please confirm that.
No huge expenses for further equipment and such.
Right.
I was wondering, for instance, if I got a C minus in math, whatever, never happened, but if I did, and say I was a junior in high school, how many people would know that?
How many people would know that you got a C minus?
If I didn't say anything.
If you didn't say anything to anybody, your teacher, your school counselor, and your parents, and you.
Nothing to my parents.
You didn't say anything to your parents.
No, so there'd only be two people, plus you would have access to that.
Basically, right, in terms of who has access to it, but who's actually going to go looking for it, I mean, the access to it would be your teacher, your counselor, myself, and the secretary in student services.
Okay.
If you're a special education student, your case manager might have access to it, but, and the school psychologist, but.
Who concerned about privacy?
Well, yeah, there's this line in here that says, "Through increased system permissions."
Right.
Additional.
Teachers, the individual teachers only have access to students that they have.
Yeah.
So if I'm your English teacher, I technically can access your current, like, your classroom grades.
Okay, yeah, just worried about privacy, and I see a list of other individuals, non-classroom teachers, guidance counselors, information technology staff, clerical staff, support staff.
Well, see, now, as you say that, I mean, there's layers to this, because the state of New York is going to get access to it, because we report all, the state of New York, like, all of those state reports go out, and that includes all of the student grades and the associated teacher.
Yeah.
I mean, that's Big Brother keeping track of how we're doing.
Right, okay.
But I think this policy was designed to sort of specifically limit and contain, one, how it can be accessed, who has access to it, and also require us to have certain safeguards, so that we can protect the students from unauthorized, including other students being very risky.
Well, of course, yeah.
Tampering with the system.
And I'm talking to Michael, because we have about as much security on that as we can.
Yeah.
Right. Well, you get to a point where a lot of diminishing returns, in terms of, you know, we could encrypt everything, and then everybody would have to go with, you know, laser scanners with the eyes and the fingerprint and that kind of thing, but.
But the only people who actually have the ability to make a change in a grade outside of when the grades are locked, so a teacher, you know, we open a window, there's a window where grades are, the teachers submit their grades for the marking period, and once we pass that window, those grades become locked, and even, even your current teacher can't go in and change your grade from the last marking period without going through the student services office.
Okay, okay. Okay, and the second policy is for the use of school facilities, and.
Are you gonna have a motion on this one?
Was that the first reading?
These are committee reports.
No, I bet you were into it. We're into the, okay, the policy. Is this the first reading of the student grading policy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's first reading, and it will also be first reading for the use of school facilities. And I'm sorry.
Well, I was just thinking you might want to have a separate motion for each policy.
For each policy, okay. All right, well, then let's entertain a motion to have first reading for the student grading information systems. So moved. Second. Okay, all in favor? I agree. Thank you, Michael, while keeping me tidy and my bookkeeping here. Okay, then also, entertain a motion for the use of school facilities. So moved, and seconds.
As first, yeah.
Okay, now, discussion on this one.
It's a little more complex.
Yeah, this one is a lot more complex, and I, well, can I just jump in?
Yes.
Joe will jump in, Kimberly perhaps.
Right, because we have additional, after we have reviewed this, we have additional information that we've requested from the lawyer regarding some of our questions.
Yeah, this, what you have in front of you reflects the latest thing we received from legal counsel, and with only one addition that we've identified, and that would be on page 4A, we were listing organizations that would have, that we would make exceptions for, and one organization that we know we need to add is the TruMindsbury Central School District Foundation, that they meet on our campus, and they, we would not charge them off due for that. But going back to the beginning, so that's really the best way to enter into the conversation, going back to the beginning, this is a new look, basically, at New York Education Law, Section 414, that really lays out the permissions and the conditions for school districts to have non-school groups use their facilities. And it's closely related to the policy we have, but where it's important for us to look at this and the board to consider this policy and adopt it, really, is that when we don't charge anything to an organization for any kind of building use, then they actually become an extension of the district, and you, that is not something that we want to continue doing, so, and what can happen is, is if they're an extension of the district, and perhaps they're paying employees, or perhaps someone's injured in their organization while on our campus at a function or something like that, then we are legally open to claims. And so it's important for us to get clear about our facilities' use policy, and we have some groups that have been using our district facilities, which totally is understandable, because we want to have our campus open, but they've been doing it without any kind of fee, so we haven't had that legal separation, so as the board, when the board adopts this, we'll take our time to implement and make it work for everyone, but we do need to kind of take that step. This also just makes clear that we're gonna take a look at all the aspects of using the facility, if there's a custodial charge, we've had that in the past, so that's not really new, but maybe a little more in-depth look at the cost of all the things associated. Right now, we just open up our buildings at times for use, and there's a lot of associated costs that we haven't really put crack up, so we're asking Joe to kind of take a look at that, and again, we're not looking at large expenses, but we do need to have that legal separation from charging a building or grounds of use fee.
It's not, it's not designed to increase revenue as much as it is designed to decrease risk, so.
Yeah, we talked, in our facilities meeting, we talked extensively about this, and our facilities get tremendous use, and almost all of it is related to our children and their activities, not all of it by any means, we have, you know, our soccer, organic soccer club comes and brings people from all over, other, outside of our district, which is fine, it's great, and they are fairly aware and generous with their, they pay us something, but I think we're talking about formalizing more of these kinds of relationships, because after we've spoken to the lawyers, or the lawyer, he says, "Well, you know, you really have to get more strict about charging people some fee and separating what is a school district-approved activity sponsored, and what is an activity that, for instance, might be a for-profit activity that actually happens in our school buildings." And we really have to be clear and change our modus operandi, I think, on this. And we're not looking to make money, we're just looking for legal protection, and also, you know, facility protection, too. You know, Joe's people have to follow up a lot of these activities that maybe are not entirely school-related or vaguely school-related, and, you know, we pay them to do that, you know, maybe some of the people running these activities should help a little bit.
There's also more clarification than I think we've had in the past around certain kinds of meetings, yes, elections, yes, childcare, mental health, dental clinics, leave enlist graduation, so there's a little more clarity than we've had in the past around permissible uses.
Yes, we received some really valuable information from the lawyer, and she's connecting it to school, so it's easy to be able to see the paper trail. Okay, so this is not, adopting at this point, just to keep you all in the loop.
Yeah, I'm thinking that this might come back in January for a second reading and possible approval, and we want to take one more look at it and add the foundation to the list of.
Yep, yeah, I'd like to make sure the other board members are here.
Right, as well. The other thing that's why this policy is timely is Joe's been leading the effort to convert all of our building use request process to be online, so this comes hand-in-hand with that, and the requirements for liability insurance, bringing in those kinds of things, so it's all gonna happen pretty much in the same timeframe, and we are gonna move to that in January, we're gonna come back in January, if you were to be an outside group person, anyone reserve a district facility, just go through the whole online process.
Registration can take, can take place online, however, what their lawyer recommends that the hold harness agreement does not have an electronic signature, that that is an actual signature. Does that cover any loopholes possible? Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on to the, nice segue, right into the facilities.
Well, do we want to have a motion to accept the first reading?
Yep. Do we want to present it as first reading at this point?
Yeah, I think you could, because then when you do second reading, you'll.
In anticipation of the fact that it will be, it will be changed. Okay, then I'll accept a motion for the first reading. So moved, and a second?
Second.
Okay, it's gonna be done. Peter, show. Okay, moving on to facilities.
Okay.
Michelle, speak up.
Facilities, well, we did spend time talking about facilities use, so I won't upset what I have to say about that. We talked about our upcoming security system update, and are hoping to make the initial approach by, what's the name of the company?
Day Automation.
Day Automation, make it a little bit larger, because we have capital to do that, I mean, we have a project that's probably estimated to be $300,000 total, in total.
Yeah, between the two different funding streams, you got the capital project and our capital outlet project, which is built into our budget, they're about $320,000, and when you take all the incidentals out, we have somewhere in the 280 range, plus or minus.
So initially, I believe we were thinking about the first step being a $200,000 step, but decided to make it more thorough.
Yeah, basically, the first proposal from Day Automation that we accepted at the last board meeting was to 11 and 13, or something, low 200s, so we're trying to expand on that and add additional cameras, add more card readers, just to maximize that dollar that we have to spend, because we don't want to do the project and then have this money that we've got to go back out, and, so essentially, it's kind of like a change order to the contract, is just adding additional components, which is all part of our master plan for the security.
And would this be pretty much the total project that we're gonna undertake instead of just two-thirds?
No, I mean, if I were to throw a dart at it, I think it's about two-thirds. We'll almost do all of our interior cameras that were, our master plan identifies, and most of the card readers on the doors that we might have identified where we want those, and so our next phase would be kind of like exterior cameras and just catching different areas of our campus outside of buildings, so whether that's next year's capital outlet project, or if it's capital project five years down the road, is when we'll start to address those. But our whole security master plan, what we're doing right now is the infrastructure and then getting as much equipment in as we can with the money that we have to spend.
Questions, comments? The other big part of the facilities discussion was just our, the capital project and how we're trying to set that up as soon as possible, basically, to get moving ahead. Part of it's based on our building condition survey, part of it's. Part of it's based on our building condition survey, part of it is based on what we see as the future of our school district, and our, the actual facilities of our school district. And we talked about setting up a committee with interested parties, you know, the principals might be interested, school board members, certainly superintendent, and maybe Kimberly, and also teachers, and maybe a few community members could input, maybe a group of 15 or 20 people to... And we would like to set some meeting dates, maybe starting in February, March, maybe four or five meetings, and sort of talk about where we wanna go, what we want this place to look like in five years. You have to remember that it takes, pretty much, when you decide what you wanna do, it takes, you know, five years to get it done, or four years. So, we talked a lot about that, and how to set that up. And I think we're gonna do some outreach on that through the superintendent's office.
Yep. So, speak to him. Get the mechanics in place to be able to create the committee?
Yeah, we talked and talked and talked, and it's time to stop talking.
But we went non-stop.
Let's need to talk until March. Stop talking till we start talking.
Okay, that's it? Is that it? I think that's it, yeah. Okay, do we have any information on the athletics? Who's Gary's in here?
Well, yes, John King and I were there, so we'll take team this. Since Frank and Gary are the two members of the committee. We met with Mike Brainerd and Jason Fulton again, and reviewed together the numbers that Mike provided, looking forward with youth football. Well, actually, Michelle was there for much of it, so she could chime right in as well. And I think in the end, and you'll see reflected later in the board, on the board agenda, our recommendation that we believe will guarantee our students the opportunity to participate, because as you know, in the summer of 2014, they weren't allowed to participate because we didn't have the numbers. So, taking all the numbers into consideration and leaving the opportunity open for modified to grow, because that's where the youth football is, all their energy and their efforts are to grow the program there. So, between youth football, modified, and what we know, our students who are playing varsity now, and even being really optimistic about that, you'll see the recommendation that'll come forward for that later in the board meeting. And we could talk about it now, but we might wanna talk about it then as well. So, that was the majority of the meeting, I think it seemed like.
Pretty much.
To talk about, I don't know, once you get done with football, that was about it. So, it's pretty much it.
Have fun.
Probably, probably our cheer club, our cheer club is down the hallway.
Up and run, look me, musty.
Yeah. So, that was pretty much athletics committee meeting.
Okay. Okay, transportation?
We talked about buses, and we're looking to buy two buses, two propane buses, I believe, this next spring. Propane, because the prices keep going down, and the reliability keeps going up, and the bus drivers like them. And we still have five, five or seven diesels for some of the longer trips, although apparently the propane refueling stations are starting to pop up here and there, so Syracuse, Rochester, I think, maybe. So, the potential to actually go in a propane bus, which has a 300-mile bout, is more real. So, we're looking to buy two, two new propane buses, and retire some of the older, more troublesome buses.
Okay. Community engagement.
Michelle?
This might be a fill-in-the-blank between the three...
Tagged unit.
We talked about the survey.
We did.
For the entire meeting.
A lot.
And we have some results back, and, but, one thing that was pretty clear is that it isn't representational of, of our voters, the voting demographics.
Yes.
So, brainstorming ways to solve that problem, trying to get a more representational feedback about the survey. We do understand that the format of the survey was intimidating to people, and I think that that is a discouraging part, that's why the participation isn't as high as we'd like to see it. So, and Michael, stop me if this is not what we're, this is not the road that we're on, but the intention of the first survey was to guide us into the second survey. So, with all the lessons, the experiment of the first survey, I think the second survey will be able to solve some of the issues about why people aren't participating as much as we'd like, and roll out that problem solving in the second survey, so.
That's exactly right. We're gonna try to see if the company can do like a phone app, kind of a survey, so that, because I continued to hear that, gosh, we should do this on my iPhone, or whatever, my Samsung, whatever. So, we're gonna have to work with the company, and I'm, and I don't know yet if they have that capability. It's not, they didn't, they didn't offer that at the beginning as something they could do, but maybe technically they can make that happen. So, Michelle's exactly right. We're gonna take the first survey, and as you recall, we're gonna go out with a second survey and kind of say, okay, these are the priorities identified in the first survey, now let's, let's get a little bit more input and refinement with the second survey. And so, we're thinking that, that'll probably be, well, probably February, by the time that would roll back out. But our goal is to get about, I'm gonna say probably 100, it was 95 as of last Thursday. We probably had about 100 people fill out this survey, and our goal was to have a lot more than that. So, we're gonna refine it, go back out, and I think we've learned some things, definitely, from this first survey, and we'll share them, the results with the board, and make that public as well.
We need time to call it.
Yep. And, but we'll go back out with that second survey and try to really get a lot more folks to participate.
And the idea when we first started, or Michael's vision is really that the survey happens annually, that this isn't a one-time deal, so if, if the participation is low, we can identify why and improve it as, as we go on. Also, we did extend the deadline, right? Or to be...
We haven't formally done that yet. I think right, right now, I think everyone's ready to just head out for break, and we might have to reintroduce it if we bring it in January. So, I think we'll make that decision in January.
Yeah.
So, is it live still, or is it...
I think it is live right now. People could still...
So, some people, they're still...
It's not been shut off, so, yeah, people can still get in there and do it.
They have time over the holidays to take a break, they can still...
Yeah, I'll double-check on that and make sure, and put it on our website, like you can still do it, or some, some kind of message. So, that one's a stay tuned kind of a thing. That we've learned some things from the first survey, and we'll try to make the second survey much more accessible to folks.
Okay. Work in progress. Okay. So, of this.
Yes.
Quick review of your BOSIs?
We haven't had either, a meeting to be there, but there were a couple of pieces of information that I missed. So, February 2nd, and I will email these to you. February 2nd, from 6:30 to 8:30, in Auburn at the West Middle School on Jan. C Street. They will be doing, CNY will be doing their regular annual governmental get-together. I think Rick Timms will be speaking as usual. If you can't make that date, there's also one February 4th in North Syracuse at the junior high school. And I will, as I said, get this out to you. The other thing that I missed from BOSIs is that we are definitely starting a position manufacturing program. And our current holdup is trying to find a teacher. And we will be working with SED to get a transition certification, so that all of that goes through. The other thing that was new to me is that we are looking at developing a partnership with Cornell National Science Foundation. And possibly, I mean, it has yet to be worked out, but possibly work, ready lab space at Cornell. Again, we need to find a teacher for that position. And we do have two students on the Cornell campus, not from this school, but in the divisions program, both in ecology. One is working on forestry, the other is working on a lot of quality. And they do spend two full days on campus.
Okay. Any questions or comments? That's kind of exciting about the manufacturing, hopefully... Are you looking locally, or is this...
Slowly, but surely, oh, yeah, we've been looking locally for years. Making those contacts is really, really tedious, but we're making headway.
Okay. You want to be a member of this report?
So, here in front of us, I am taking this evening's opportunity to take the board and the public through a closer look at our health insurance. And so, there's a lot of detail here, but starting with how many policies we actually offer here at the district, and are supported in portion by the district. So, you can see at the top, to the far left, we have individual plans, and it's broken down by TTA, support staff, leadership, superintendent, and then retirees. And you can see we have 24 individual TTA insurance contracts. And then, in total, overall, we have 109 individual policies. And then jumping down a little bit, you can see the family premiums. We have 68 family policies that are supported by the district, and in total, for family policies, including retirees, we have 145, for a total of 254 total policies supported by the district. Moving over toward the right, you can see I've included the total contracts payable, and then we've multiplied that times how much the district share is. And in column H, you can see that's actually the total premium, the annual premium, with the exception of the retirees. So, this is the district share, but the retiree, you can see that's the total premium, because the percentage they pay is slightly odd configuration. It's like 50% for the individual retiree, and then 35% for the family member, when you drop down to family. But what all these numbers really mean? So, in total, you can see that our monthly premium, right here, is $233,000 on the average. That, that does fluctuate to some degree, and you can see the black line just above it, that's the offset by what our retirees pay. So, in total, before we take into consideration the retiree payments, it's $268,000 each month. So, it's a significant number. Moving to the slight right, you can see the total premiums that we anticipate paying this school year, this fiscal, taking into consideration the offset of $420,000 coming in from our retirees. So, we're looking at approximately $2.8 million for fiscal 15, 16, in health insurance. And of course, this time of year, we're always looking at budget, and so, we know at this point, with meeting with the consortium, that we're looking at approximately a 7% increase in the premiums for next school year. And so, that could mean as much as $196,000 in additional expense for health insurance, all things considered, still taking into consideration an offset from the retiree contribution. And so, looking forward one more year, that potential increase, I factored 7.5%, that's really an unknown percentage increase at this time, but I think that's probably a safe number to factor. And we're looking at an increase of, an additional $256,000. And so, the reason why I'm showing this number this evening is, if you recall, the tax cap limitations set at 2%, which is really never 2%, that typically generates just over $200,000 in revenue for us. So, you can see how our health insurance premiums are very, very close to what we potentially collect in revenue from our tax base. And so, over the next two years, this fiscal through 2018, we're looking at $452,000 approximately in increases in health insurance. So, it's a very real number for our district, and a very real number in terms of our revenue generation.
Questions?
Well, this year, our, we don't know what our...
We are right.
Percentage increase from the state is gonna be, but it looks like it's closer to zero than two.
And I'm still missing the CPI, which should come out January 30th, for, that's the other important number.
Consumer Price Index.
Yes.
Which is like 25 or something.
So, still some unknowns in terms of state revenue increases or decreases, and also not yet knowing how much we can collect on the levy, so... But this is, this is a pretty good forecast in terms of what we're looking at for an increase in health insurance.
Carry that 10 years out, give me what you got.
I can. It may be disturbing to see right now.
$35,000 a policy?
Right now, we are looking at, one of the policies is hovering for family coverage, is about $19,000. Of course, that's the full...
Today.
Yeah, today, that's the full policy, that's not including the employee share. So, you can see it right, right here, $19,000.
So, in 10 years, it would be, if it went up 7% a year, which seems to be, it would be more like 30-plus.
And, and there are some potential changes that can be made to policies, and of course, the consortium is taking that into consideration. So, some districts are looking at changes in terms of the three-tiered drug prescription plan. So, changes in, if it goes from a $10 copay to a $25 copay, that's a significant impact on the premiums. So, those are some things that are being talked about right now at different districts to lower some of these premiums. But the classic "blue" is a rich program. We, I had actually gone to the consortium and said, what if we changed the deductible? And it really doesn't have a significant impact on the premiums, because the, the plan is pretty rich, so it's difficult to hit those increased premiums, there's so much that's already paid for in fall. Some of that state mandate, some of it's federal mandate.
Thank you.
Our puzzle really flows.
I'm tempted to say, thank you for the report, but not the information. Okay. It's your lawyer.
Well, if, watching the news or the internet, something pretty amazing happened about a week ago, where the governor's Common Core Task Force made their final report to the Board of Regents, and they, there were 21 recommendations made, and I had sent these to the board before, but I believe it's worth the conversation, it's worth the public conversation about them. So, I'd like to take you through them rather quickly, and, and at the end, I think, in some ways, we know, we know a lot more than we did, but there's a lot that is unknown at this point. Because in the same timeframe, the federal Every Student Succeeds Act was passed and signed into law, which replaces No Child Left Behind, which, we all talked about AYP for about 10 or 12 years. So, there's lots of changes on the horizon, but we don't know exactly what they mean. So, these were the recommendations. And I think there's some interesting things in the wording, because this was about the Common Core. And so, one of the recommendations was to adopt high-quality VR standards, and with input, so that's kind of a change. I think the first time around, it was the legislature adopted the Common Core, and we all said, what is it, and then how do we implement? And then we were asked to do that in a very short timeframe. But I think it's interesting, the third vote on the right, that out of all the people who did provide input to the Regents, that 71% expressed agreement of the standards. So, it wasn't like a resounding, like throw out the Common Core. So, I think that's important. Number two, and I heard this early on, hearing from our district superintendent, Jeff Madison, that most of the input was around the K through 2. So, if you could make a guess, when the New York standards are adopted, there'll probably be, the most change will probably be in the early grades. Then kind of here are some themes, and one is around populations, students with disabilities and English-language learners. I think there's some slides, and we'll move through them quickly, but there's a few slides that just say like, okay, well, that, whatever was going on was not appropriate exactly for our students with disabilities, the testing, the standards, what we were doing, and also for English and H learners. Oops, can't tell me anything. So, and this was important as well, we heard this from our, from our own teaching staff, that we want to maintain, and this came out clearly, and recommendation number four, we want to maintain not narrow... maintain not narrow the curriculum and maintain the love of reading and the joy of learning. So that was, that's important, we want to keep them in. Again, you'll hear a theme of more input from stakeholders, more input from parents, I think the School Board Association, principals. So there's more, and from teachers. I think our new commissioner is already moving to get more input from teachers. All of the test questions for the next test in the cycle this spring have been reviewed by New York State teachers. They were, they're all Pearson items, and Questar's got the contract, but they're all reviewed by New York State teachers this time and approved. Local flexibility, this is important. And I don't think we've felt this very much in the last few years since we were adopting the Common Core. So local flexibility in curriculum. Updated and improved sample curriculum resources. I think that's again a reaction to how fast the Common Core standards and the curriculum was rolled out in 2012-13. This is just a tool, a digital platform that will enable our teachers to share good ideas with each other across the state. Professional development on the revised state standards. Again, more input involving educators, parents, and other education stakeholders in creation and periodic review of the standards and exams. Lots more input than we felt in the past. We're talking about gathering student input. How would you like that test? Provide ongoing transparency to parents, educators, and local districts on the quality and content of all tests, but not limited to publishing the test question. So again, you're hearing some broad themes, lots more input, and responding more to New York State stakeholders. This is important as well, reducing the number of days and shortening the duration of the test. It's just been quite a long test for our students. This is important, providing teachers with flexibility and support to use authentic formative assessments to measure student learning. That's, we've been talking about that through our Teaching as the Core and looking at our own district assessments. Formal review, our tests are timed. Some states don't time them. Students can take as long as they want on that test. And I know one state where student starts the test at 2:00, or at 9:00 in the morning, and they're still there until time for them to get on the bus, and that's the end of their day. But they can take it as long as they, they can take as long as they want that day. There isn't like a two-hour timeline. So New York is going to start thinking about that. Flexibility, here again, I mentioned this theme earlier, helping our students with disabilities with more flexibility in testing. And again, students with disabilities. This was important, not using the tests as being a single measure for mandating academic intervention services. I think we're already, we already use several measures in that. So we're kind of beyond that already, but this sort of confirms it. And again, helping out our English-language learners. We don't have as many, but there's some portions of New York that have sent lots of English-language This one is probably the one that was, I think, the biggest change in the whole thing. And that is that the results from the current Common Core standards and tests will only be advisory and not be used to evaluate the performance of individual teachers or students. So we were under, it was called 3012C, which was our marching order, so to speak, on ABPR, which is a Teacher Principal Evaluation System. And then a year ago, the governor came out with some new recommendations, and they adopted, passed 3012D, and then we were supposed to have negotiated that this year. And honestly, it's up in the air now. I do not know what they'll do with it, and I, is Harlan still here? I don't know where, I don't know, if you hear something, tell me, because I do not know where that's going to go. So at this point, that a lot is up in the air with that. But I think that one's clear, that, and I believe this was just that the Regents had to pass this, and to me, it was amazing that we thought the legislature had this power over everything, and yet the Regents accepts a report and some recommendations, and really our work has changed quite a bit. The ESSA, just related, I think will change. AYP is out, we talked so much about AYP. However, there's some things that will stay the same. We'll still have 3-8 testing. There's a lot more, some of the parallel things to what happened with our Regents, it happened at the federal level, more freedom at the local level, and more freedom at the state level, if you just flip it up one level, more freedom at the state level to do some things. However, that's all going to come out of the regulations, and it's anyone's guess about how in a political election year, presidential election year, how that will all play out. So I don't, even though we know what it says, the real changes for us will come out through the regulations from the federal level. I think a good point, though, to take away is that we still have the Common Core for now, and we're going to take a look at it along with the rest of the state, and that truly forms the backbone of our curriculum.
Out of curiosity, given the fact that so much of this is influential, where does that leave our teachers?
I think it changes it for the impact of being concerned that a growth score from year to year will have an impact on their evaluation and their final rating. We just know that it can't be used if they, from what we've seen from regulation, from recommendation 21. But other than that, I'm thinking that in the classrooms, we're still teaching to high standards, and we're challenging our students.
It was not a rational part of the
The essence of, I mean, again, what you saw there is that the Common Core standards, for the most part, are fine. The issues that people have made with Common Core is really not about the standards, it's about the implementation, the testing, and all of those, you know, the impact on teacher evaluation, those are the issues. So taking the growth score out of the teacher's evaluation, that's the right thing to do. Shortening the 3-8 testing and making it more reasonable. Jesus, the Regents exams are only three hours, one day. You know, for God's sake, we subject third graders to, you know, three straight days of testing. That's inhumane, which is why, for one subject. You know, and so addressing that issue, I think, addresses what a lot of people who are very reasonable and very well, you know, involved in education would say. So fortunately, our new commissioner is listening to what people are saying.
Yeah, when I read the recommendations, I was actually pleasantly surprised. They seem to have hung in on a lot of the real sticky issues that create a lot of the session. So the one section that I thought was really, I'd like to see, and that is removing the time limits on tests. I think there's been a fair amount of research done that indicates the fact that that's really penalizes children who have a cognitive approach in a different way, that if we remove the limitations, that you must do this in an hour, and simply say you've got two hours to do it, they don't usually take the full two hours and the test score is improved. So aren't we more interested in what they know rather than watching about rates?
And I think it's a balance, too, because if you tell some children that they have as much time, they will take the test all, the whole day until they get to the bus, and they will have worn themselves out, and it's, you know, it's torture. So I think it's a balance of, the test should be appropriate, and then they have an appropriate amount of time. But, you know, some kids can really, they will work themselves, don't you think? The whole day, when it's not, that's not helpful either.
So you add those to the children, that sort of freeze, thinking, 50 minutes?
So it will definitely, would definitely help some kids to not have that.
It'd be nice if we just get rid of test altogether, but that's. Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding the consent agenda? Before we move on to the consent agenda, I did this last week, Anna, can I ask you to sort of chime in and let us know what's happening on the ground?
So there was a big concert recently, and I didn't get to go, but I heard it was really good. And I saw a little clip, so I think it was Twitter or Facebook or something. So it looked like a lot of fun. The varsity boys' basketball team lost against Ridenham, but it was a close game. The JV boys won. There's a big door decorating competition in high school. I think judging is tomorrow. Robotics had their first meeting, and I saw pictures and stuff, and it looks like, I'm not entirely sure, because I don't, I can't understand everything that they post and stuff, but it looked, they had like a football-themed challenge or something that they were preparing for.
Well, they find out their new, their new challenge for the season, they get on January 9.
Okay, but they were
So they're doing training stuff now.
Yeah, they call it like their pre-season or something. I don't know. But it looked really cool and interesting. And so, yeah, I think that's about it for student stuff.
Any questions or comments? Will you let us know who wins the door challenge?
Of course.
Okay. Is it by voting, or do you have this judge?
There will be, there will be very neutral judging tomorrow afternoon. Unbiased. There's some good ones out there.
Trying to make sure that there was an unbiased aspect going on. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda, with the exception of item B. A second. Okay. Is there any, no, consent agenda, that discussion, all in favor? Moving on to E. Mike, Peter, you said you had a question?
I did. For Angie, basically, and the reason I, I mean, I could ask you at your office, but the reason I ask
Or fine to do it in public.
Yeah, so that the board members get a little understanding if they don't already have it. Three of these designations say limited major life activity. What is that?
So that would be the difference between CSE and 504. So the consent agenda is some CSE, Committee on Special Education. Those are the kids with educational disabilities. Typically, they're requiring, I think the simple way to look at it is they're requiring the assistance of a special ed teacher, whether that special ed teacher's in their class or pulling them out, but some help from a special ed teacher with academics. Students can also have a 504 accommodation plan. So those ones that you were talking about, if you look to the left of where it says limited major life activity, you'll see Section 504.
Yeah.
And like the one above it says classified. So that would be the difference. So some of those are Committee on Special Education, and some of those are Section 504. So in order to be eligible for a 504 plan, it's broader. Like you could have a student that is diabetic, so their major life activity would be, it's production, I know. There's certain ones that you can choose from, and they might just need some simple accommodations. You might have a student who has ADHD, and they need some testing accommodations. So the federal wording that we get is limited major life activity.
So that 504 is a federal designation? Is that right?
It is, so Section 504 is
It's federal law.
Yeah. It comes from ADA, yeah. So it carries, you know, the same protections as an IEP. You know, if you went to a different district, or you, from class to class, or, you know, we have to ensure that for Regents exams, for local exams. But it's not exactly, it's much more simpler. Usually it's accommodations, or they might just get speech therapy. It's not going to be as heavy-duty as an IEP.
It sounds so serious.
It does, I know. I agree. It sounds, try running a parent meeting and saying, yes, it does sound very serious.
Okay. Just clarification.
Any other questions? Any motion to accept E?
So?
All in favor? I'm opposed or any objections? Motion carried. Okay, moving on to D. Item A, is approval for merger of schools for athletic activity. I need a motion to
So?
And a second? Okay. Is there any discussion or questions about this?
Yeah. What?
What are the numbers?
So we sat down with the Athletic Committee, and we met with Mike Brainerd and Jason Fulton.
Mike Brainerd is the head
And they are, they're the leadership for the youth football program. And also distinguished alumni of our own football program. So they have a passion, and they are working very diligently to try to support the future of football in Truanceburg, and feel very strongly that it would be really good to be able to offer our kids a Truanceburg football team and football program, which we don't disagree with them at all. The struggle that we have is based on the enrollment of our district and the level of interest in football at this time. And so there is sort of finding this balance, which is, we want to guarantee our students the opportunity to participate in a football program. But right now, we just don't have the numbers within our own building to support having a team of our own. And for the foreseeable future, based on their look, as well as our own look at students that are involved in football, for the, in the short term, we just don't see it being feasible. So the reality is that we really need to look at our options for a merger for the Varsity program. These guys feel very strongly that there is, there is the potential for the future, based on the level of interest that they see in the youth program. And so trying to find how to do a merger in a way that's supportive of our current students who really want to play football, they want to be a part of a merge team, but they also want it to be a neutral merged team, not us going up to play for the Falcons. So South Seneca has been very agreeable to a neutral merger, and at the end of our meeting, we really came to the consensus that for the next four years, there's really no way that our school district would be able to have a football team on its own. So it really makes sense to go to a merged program with both a neutral merger for varsity. But they asked us for a little bit more flexibility around the modified program, because if there are numbers coming up, and there is the possibility of having our own team at the modified level, that we would like to be able to do that with the goal of someday possibly bringing back a football program. But as a group, we really went around and around on a lot of issues that play into this, not the least of which is that South Seneca is going to need us, too, you know, at some point.
So
So the question is, is that in four or five years, we really will need to take a look at this and say, do we want to, are we in a position where both teams can separate and stand on their own, or do we need to continue to work together? So we talked a lot about supporting our youth football program as well as their youth football program, and there's, you know, there needs to be some conversation at the community level about supporting the youth programs if we're going to have kids maintain an interest in football. But the other reality is, is that the enrollment of our school is such that we don't have a lot of athletes to pick from. I mean, if you just go by 80 kids to a class, half are boys, half are girls, that's about 40 boys. And, you know, we said, you really need 10 to 15 kids at each grade level to have a sustainable, solid football program. And with kids that are playing soccer and running cross-country during that season, that's really tough, that's going to be tough to manage.
And actually, these are Mike Brainerd's numbers, and this is, he really put some great work into this to make a visual of it. So think about 2016, it's not even on here. See, there's no 16. You can see, so next year, next summer, August, is not even on here. So I think we've all agreed that with the numbers we have right now and have this year, that next year, we won't have enough students to field a Truanceburg varsity or modified. Okay, so that's next year, so 2016. Here's 2017. The red line is varsity. There's varsity. So 2017, these are, and these numbers are agree with what I came up with in conversations with Chris Peterson. Well, not zero, but I think there's a chance of
Yeah, they're, these numbers are based on their enrollment in the youth football program, not our program involvement, so They don't really have any kids, they have no kids in their program right now that would be eligible to play varsity football next year or a year after because of age. So we have, we know that we have ten.
Eight.
Well, we have eight right now, uh, but we have, you know, a few more that have said that they might play, but we don't have firm numbers. But they don't have any kids until two thousand nineteen is the first batch of kids that are currently involved in the youth program that would be eligible to play varsity football at that time.
And that's assuming there'd be no attrition in their numbers.
Yeah. Yes, yes, I guess. This is, yeah, I don't know exactly how they.
It's an optimistic look.
Yeah.
It's a crystal ball.
Yes.
But if you, if you kind of stay with what Mike Brainerd provided, that, so here's next fall, the following fall, that's two years. The following fall, that's three years. And, and these are parallel to what I came up with, that it's, it's the fall of two thousand nineteen. We're kind of on our way, but remember, we really think we need twenty-two is the bare, bare minimum. And twenty-eight is where you really start getting to where you can make a team. So really, one, two, three, four years, and then that fifth year, we might be getting there, all things considered. So, um, the recommendation is for six, in seasons now, not school years, the sixteen season, the seventeen season, the eighteen season, and the nineteen season, four seasons. That we would combine team names with, and colors and mascots with, um, South Seneca. And it'll be in a fifty-fifty relationship. We're, we're going to do it together. We'll have half the games here. Although next year, we might be able to have all the games here if their, their, um, bond passes in March to redo their football field. We intend to have half the practices here, if possible. So it's, um, going to be much more of we're in it together rather than we're going up there and playing with and for them. And then modified, you can see, there are higher numbers. That's the blue line. And, and this is simply because they just don't know looking out into the future. So, but Mike was true to his model. And so you can see that, oh, you know what, there's, there, again, year sixteen isn't even seen. So next year, we're going to come, the recommendation is to combine with South Seneca. But then the following year, take a look at it, because there you can see it, um, between twenty-two and twenty-four. So that's, that's right in that, that kind of like, I think we can do it, but I'm not totally sure. But then the following year, uh, two years from now, then that, that's fairly promising. So the recommendation is to, a year from now, take a look at this number. That's what we'll be looking at a year from now, for the following season, two years from now, and make the determination. And that's, um, I'm hoping that the board will approve. And as you know, section four kind of makes us crazy, because they say that we have to make a commitment either way by, um, January first of each year.
Okay, so we have.
We can't wait.
That'd be tonight.
Unless you want to meet on.
Right, she wanted to just keep meeting. Yeah, so that's one of the, you know, we had an additional meeting, I think everybody knows, we had an additional meeting with youth football's parents. The Thursday after our last meeting, uh, after our last board meeting, and that was in November.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
This is a very reasonable solution, and I also think it supports the, the students who are currently playing football. This, from your conversation with the mirrors in mind, this is, this is what they actually want.
Did you mention running with the boys?
Yeah, I don't know if we actually said that. We, yeah, Mike, Mike and Jason and I sat down and met with all of the, the boys who played football through the merge program this last season. And uniformly, every one of them respectfully said that they really wanted it to be a neutral merger. They, that's what they want. So they really had positive, all of them reported positive experiences playing with the merge team this year. But, but they, as much as they had a great time this year, they think it would be just that much better if it was a neutral, you know, team, their neutral colors and such.
They're going to come up with a name for it, haven't they?
They've got some suggestions.
Got some ideas.
Had a couple of good ones.
But it's going to be an agreement. We're not going to go up there and tell them what our.
Right.
As long as the colors don't become pink and purple.
Yeah, something, some combination of black and blue and gold, probably. Cause they're, they're black and gold, we're blue and gold, and we figure.
Gold, they look like a man with a jacket. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any objections? Motion carried.
Good.
Okay.
We'll move forward. You'll hear more about it when she.
Yes, well, it is involving.
A thorough scientific study that.
What? Nothing I could grab.
Let you go. Okay, item B under Dicassus is the acceptance of an anonymous donation in the amount of about a hundred dollars. And this is to support the elementary school students at the discretion of Bethany Ladd, who was the elementary school nurse. So I need a motion to accept. Uh, second?
Second.
Are there any questions or?
Thank you to the anonymous donor. It was very generous.
Yes, yes. Especially given the fact that this gives a lot of autonomy to, to Mrs. Ladd, so that she can address needs as they are there. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Okay, board forum.
Other than comments that the board would like to make, we are still on this journey through this book. And some board members were able to attend the movie based on the book, so, and John King was there. So I'm hoping we can kind of continue the conversation about both the book and the movie.
Anyone want to talk about getting the movie shown here?
I, I think we, we could do it. There might be some, some considerations not to, but we, we would need to think more about that. There was, so, yeah, there was one piece that isn't something that we're headed down that path at all, so I'm not sure we want to bring that in, but that, but the rest of it was good, so.
Well, I didn't get to say this last week, but thank you for introducing this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Well.
It could be a, quite a board forum about, very reflective board forum, or you can make a comment. So, your thoughts?
Well, I think that we can discuss a little bit, but I would actually prefer to have a, the entire board with us to be able, because I think Gary was there as well as Peter and John. So, yeah, but we could sort of enrich it, but it was certainly a very interesting, and from my perspective, it was very well produced.
It was beautiful.
That, I mean, it was done by professionals in a way that you could follow the pattern and they were most persuasive.
Well, we could bring it back in January and do chapters three and four and the movie. That would be, people can, can stay with the book. I'll keep my study guides coming.
Okay.
That'd be good. The one thing that I noticed that concerned me to some extent was, um, the group working with cogs and wheels and such. Um, and the, the photographers did a great job of panning over each group. But every time they hit the one group that the guy wound up working four weeks after school.
Right.
He was saying, no, that's not going to work there. No, that can't be there. And you could see as time went on, the group kind of disappeared and it became just him. And I think, um, for our teachers in particular, it's going to be really, really important. Um, and I would imagine quite difficult. I mean, I think starting at a very young age, we are going to have to be modeling this behavior, because, uh, clearly that did not work.
Well, it did. It just went clear into the summertime.
Well, and he wound up doing it all by himself.
I think he did in terms of that group work as well.
And so.
Me? Which I think he did in terms of that group work, which is why it grouped us all.
That's why the group is all.
You're absolutely right. Some professional development around.
Yeah, really.
To make sure that your student groups are working effectively as a group.
Right, although as they pointed out, that was one of their most difficult things for them to do, is that is to turn the entire process over to the students and then let them stand and fail. Because they perceived that not necessarily, it wasn't necessarily failure, but a very acute learning experience. But I think of, oh, I, I've learned work and stuff that I've tried to do that didn't work, and things that I didn't work. So, uh, my only concern about the, the, um, the editing of film is what they didn't do is let us know how the rest of that group was.
Where are they running?
In other words, what, what modifications do they have for them?
Or what they would do differently next time to sort of bring that leader more into a group role instead of.
Because I kept feeling sorry for the kids that were sitting there doing this.
Well, there's, there were some good themes in the sense that, you know, project-based learning is a great way for students to learn. Some of the, to learn the content, but also the soft skills. And that's where, you know, that's why we're talking about project-based learning.
We just have them in this week?
Yep, and it's, it's not necessarily something that, that we're going to sort of go wholesale like they did. And I, I always take a cautionary note with, with a documentary like this, because the people who are making it are not necessarily people who are in education that's an outsider's perspective.
No, there was an agenda.
There's an agenda. And, and the one other cautionary note that I took away from the film is always is that we, a lot of times in these documentaries or books or whoever, they talk about charter schools as the end-all, be-all of education. And the troubling piece with that is while they, they proclaimed very much at the beginning of the movie that this is a regular school with regular kids and that they, they pull from all the different communities and they make sure that their, you know, levels, the socioeconomic levels match the larger community and things like that. There's still a choice. Students choose to go to that school.
Well, in addition to that.
And parents choose to send their kids. Right, and parents choose to send their kids to that school.
Yes.
And so they're, they have, by nature, there's a certain population of kids in that school who are invested in their education and parents are invested in their education. And so, again, here in Truementsburg, I'll tell you, we have a pretty good deal too, because our parents and our students are really invested in education. But I think a lot, when, when they make charter schools out to be the, the solution to public education, I cringe, because a lot of school districts that are having struggles and difficulties aren't, aren't dealing with a charter population. And that's, and so that, that by default changes the dynamic in that school. So.
There's some other themes that, that I, that I know we'll explore. Uh, one, John is, is actually just exploring in the high schools about not having number grades. In the documentary about the, the girl who said, I have my choice, I just worry about acing the test rather than, than this other learning. And then her mom, I think chimed in too, yeah, I'm worried about acing the test. So there are just, there's a lot of things there for us to consider. And, um, I think as we continue to read through the book, I, I think it'll just give us some other ideas about things we've already been talking about and just kind of enhance our thinking around, um, things that we can do with our students without wholesale. We're going to do this whole other thing differently and change education, but we can always improve what we're doing. So maybe this will give us some ideas as we move through the spring.
Well, as the narrator also pointed out, is the fact that the track record for this type of, of curriculum isn't long enough to be able to predict any kind of success one way or the other. Although, um, when we were driving home, I thought, well, you know, um, project-based learning. And yet, there's been project-based learning around for such a long time in 4H, and it's called learn by doing. And there are some fairly interesting, um, statistics, which I've been trying to find. I know they're out there, I just haven't been able to put my hand on them, indicating the fact that, how well this type of an approach works. Because that's been going on for seventy years. So I think that we could sort of look to some alternative areas, and somebody saying this concept, not locked into a very specific. But let's see how adaptable it is to help us get our children where they want to be. So.
And if there is, it seems like some things are converging. If there's a time when we've ever felt like we even had a hint of some freedom to not just be focusing on testing and assessment, it's now. So maybe some things are going to come together here for our students and our staff, so that we can get a little more freedom to do some things differently.
As a teacher, I would have been so thrilled to be able to work with somebody outside of the field and basically, my field, and correlate them. The way they did with the humanities and with the physics.
And, yeah, the humanities in particular, to me, was just fascinating, studying a group of falling civilizations. I mean, what a great way to grasp a block of information instead of having to look it up, you know, sequentially, as it occurred.
I sort of, I, I didn't actually buy into all the, uh, mostly in the book, actually. I didn't really buy into a lot of what they were saying, I must say. I mean, there, there's a disdain for memorization.
I didn't talk to him, I promise. I didn't say.
You said some? Anyway.
I went on a.
They say, oh yeah, it's nice to know the facts, but then, no, no, we have to have children who can critically analyze, collaborate, communicate, creatively solve problems. Because the world we're facing is changing and, uh, our entire governmental system is going to depend on educated people. That was a leap. I thought that was quite a leap for them. I, I wasn't buying the whole thing about, I mean, the movie is great. The, the kids in that school who they featured, you know, that was very, that was wonderful, really, enlightening for those kids. But to actually do that in the real world of New York State and college-related situations, I, I think you'd really be going out on a limb.
Well, I think, um, perhaps, we'll see, but I know in our elementary school, some of the project lead the way things feel very much.
Oh, it's great.
On a small scale of what we saw in that.
It was just, I think the disdain for traditional education was.
The idea of reading is, is to take, take, there are, there are pieces of it that we certainly will apply and continue to. I mean, we're looking for, as we, you know, we've talked a lot the last few months, we're looking at intern, creating internship opportunities, capstone projects. You know, trying to get kids.
It's great.
Real-world experiences, more project-based learning. It's all good stuff. However, we are still a function of the New York State culture and New York State education system, where our kids have to pass Regent's exams. You know, so you can't just, now, as the presenter who, we, uh, the woman that came in and presented to the staff, the middle school. Yes, about project-based learning, you know, she said, you know, no, you're not going to throw out your entire curriculum and go to a hundred percent project-based learning. However, it is really awesome to be able to create a unit where the kids are going to do for this, just for this area. And maybe for two weeks, we're going to do a big project and cover this level of content. And what a great experience for the kids that is, and what a great learning opportunity is for them. It's different than the way we do things. It's great for the kids, but it, you know, we don't want to go to that for all forty weeks of the school year. We might do, you know, specific units that lend themselves well to that and, and give kids those opportunities. So we're giving those kids the soft skills and we're building in those soft skills. But you're not, you've still got to know certain things to get through our New York State program.
However, if you look at, at unemployment or unfilled job statistics, that is what is needed.
Well, that's the argument that I made, continue, that's the one that I continually talk to kids about, what do you major in?
Yeah.
Because one of the points, and this goes back to the presentation we had last year, that, yeah, there are, there are. The number of kids that are underemployed or unemployed coming out of college, but then when you look and see what the top majors are in college, the number one major in college is psychology.
Yeah.
Which.
Never going to take you anywhere.
John. I mean, as a person, I, I, I have a psychology degree, so I can tell you. If you're not going, unless you're going to graduate school.
Yeah.
And even, and even then, the, the overwhelming, you know, yes, there is certainly a need for people to major in psychology. But the fact that it is the largest major in our, you know, col, in colleges right now, that is not the preponderance of our workforce, is in psychology. And so what they're saying is, is that there are, you know, it's this, there's four million jobs open and two million people that are underemployed or unemployed. It's because what they've got degrees in is completely mismatched before the jobs are. So we really have to encourage kids to be majoring in, in areas where the jobs are.
You do.
So.
That will, well, unfortunately, will eventually balance itself out though, will it not? I'm thinking a number of years ago, one of the problems was that there were so many students in veterinary medicine. But when you took a look at the number of jobs that were available, that there were far too many. And these kids came out with a debt load that they couldn't support. And colleges began to go, hmm. And decided to sort of take, be responsible and take a look at how many are we actually graduating and what's the realities that they will be able to continue in this, in this field.
But we're sending out a lot of kids, we're sending a lot of kids out into the workforce that have degrees that they can't find jobs and, and hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt right now.
Right, well, that's not, I mean, that's, I think it's important for high schools to be able to sort of be counseling on that aspect.
Yes.
But I also think that the institutions of higher learning need to take some responsibility as well. I mean, we're partners in this, though we should be.
Absolutely. Why are you accepting?
Exactly, when you know.
Three, three thousand psychology majors.
And you're granting these children, you know, this, this money that they're not going to be, they can't replace.
Capital.
Well, also, things are going to be changing very, very quickly.
They are changing.
Uh, they are changing very quickly already, and they are going to continue to, and they better get nimble.
Okay, um, we, I need a motion.